I hear Councilmember Broseth.
Twenty-three now, please.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The resolution.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, we're gonna go to page twenty-nine. Item twenty-three. Resolution R-21137 by Councilmember Broseth. Expressing the council's full support for the construction of new stadium in sports complex in the Ninth Ward adjacent to George Washington Carver High School.
Thank you, Madam Clerton. Good afternoon, everyone. And I'm excited about this resolution to author in support of a new stadium in sports complex in the Upper Ninth Ward adjacent to George Washington Carver High School. There were some significant and unfortunate setbacks several years ago. But through all those setbacks, we know that setbacks can strengthen. This new project has new leadership and new support. I have full confidence in this new team that has been brought together by one of our own and former city councilmember and council president, Arnie Filco, along with many other influential and respected members of our community. At this time, I'd like our former councilmember and council president, along with our former Senator Andrew Plessis, Stacy Martin, Mr. Bobby Guerin, and Mr. Wilbur Thomas Sr. to tell us more about this significant project for a great community and for, most importantly, the children of our city and the local nonprofit that is spearheading this effort. So without further ado, Council President, welcome back.
Thank you. Is, for this one, is Mr. Filco coming in for this one, Councilmember Broseth?
Yes, yes, I'm here, I'm the president.
Perfect. Hey, good to see you, and I know you've been working on this for so long, so thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much, and Council President Meranial, Councilmember Broseth, and the rest of the city council, it's very nice to be with you and thank you for the opportunity presented today. I just want to first say before we get into the stadium publicly how pleased myself and so many members of the community are with your group leadership and the leadership of the mayor over the past year in prioritizing citizenry health. I think the path that you've taken has been right on, and the good news is, is hopefully we are, you know, coming to a period where we're soon gonna be back to a little bit of normalcy, including all of you being in chambers together, which I'm sure that you will, you know, be happy to do that. Today, what I'd like to do is very briefly tell you a little bit about the project. I'm gonna be as brief as I can, and we'd like to show a video at the end. This project, by the way, is up on our website, which is ninthwardstadium.com for anybody interested with Ninth being the number nine, ninthwardstadium.com. I'm first of all, joined today by some of my fellow board members of the new group that Councilmember Broseth referred to. And today, we have former Senator Andrew Plessis, Stacy Martin, Bobby Guerin, Wilbur Thomas Sr., Dottie Bledo, Gillian Stagg, and I can't see on my screen if Deuce was able to make it, but Deuce McAllister is part of our board along with Roy Glapion and Mark Ripple, who were unable to make today's presentation. Without going into the past in any detail at all, you know, I think a lot of people were just very disappointed that this stadium wasn't already here. This was a project that started about a decade ago with great expectation, and it just didn't happen. And the story publicly broke about a year ago. I was originally involved in the project as a donor, and I candidly, you know, thought the project was moving and happening, and it didn't. But about a year ago, the story broke, and, you know, I think a lot of people were not only surprised, but extremely disappointed. And I stepped in and said to some of my fellow board members, would you join me? Let's see if we could resurrect this, and your answer was immediately yes. So we spent the past year really behind the scenes doing what was necessary. We had to start a new corporation, which is called Ninth Ward Stadium, Inc. We've applied for nonprofit status, hopefully we'll have that very soon. We had discussions with the NOPS, because they are the owners of the land, and we had discussions with almost every elected official that would be willing to meet with us at all levels of government to let them know about what we were doing and try to gain their support. Just last week, we were able to go public with the project, and now our real work begins. So what is this? This is a three-to-five-thousand-seat stadium, more than likely at the higher levels, that would involve really multiple sports to it. Football, certainly soccer, track and field, there'll be an eight-lane track that'll be built. We very much hope as we design and build this that we can include an interior area for a Hall of Fame for New Orleans Public Schools, something that we'd be very excited about implementing. This is being built just to the north of the Carver High School site, the new Carver High School off of Almanaster, and it is owned by the NOPS, as I said, and the NOPS and the school board are extremely supportive. In fact, next month, we will be taking a, we will be taking a CEA to the school board for vote, and the CEA will lay out the rights and responsibilities between our corporation and the NOPS. We are largely a fundraising corporation. Our job over the next fourteen months is to raise five million dollars. We are hoping that 1.45 million of that will be coming from capital outlay and 3.55 coming through private fundraising. We got good news yesterday in that our capital outlay request was included in House Bill Two. We are asking for, this session, we're asking for only 250,000 to get started in Priority Two and the balance of 1.2 million in Priority Five for next year, and those were both honored and in House Bill Two. So we're very much hoping we can move that through the legislature and get that request approved. From the 3.55 million that we're raising privately, we're going to any and all sources. We're starting a little larger with major donors. We do hope that we could maybe fulfill this responsibility through some major donors so that we don't have to do a full retail campaign, but we, you know, we would love and certainly be very appreciative of any and all donations that could be made. And again, you can go to our website, ninthwardstadium.com, and there is a donate section on that website for anybody that may be watching. You know, let me just say this, and then we'll put up, and Gillian, if you're there, you can put the schematic up while I'm finishing my talk. You know, this is a really important project. I will tell you, for me personally, it's, with my sports background, this is a labor of love. And I guess in some ways, you know, the best way I know personally to give back to a community and a city that I love. And the same feeling is with the rest of the board members. They're all highly dedicated and committed. We are all doing this on the board as volunteers. We're not taking any compensation whatsoever, and we've given ourselves fourteen months, which is time to the end of next year's legislative session, to complete this fundraising, hoping that we can raise it before, but that is really our drop dead date to try to make this project happen. As you can see here, this is a very basic schematic, but you can see the field and all of the amenities that go with it. And again, what I really like about this is this will be a multi-sport venue where you could play, you know, at least football, at least soccer and track and field, boys and girls, middle schools and high schools. This will be the home field for Carver High School, but it's not exclusive. And in fact, the beauty of the project is this stadium will be available for every public school in Orleans Parish with special emphasis on, for those that are, you know, in the eastern part of our city. We don't have a whole lot in New Orleans. On the East Bank, the only things we have are Tad Gormley and Pan American and a very small stadium at Joe Brown Park. This is a much-needed asset for our youth, and we also hope it's an economic catalyst for this area. This area is a wonderful part of our city, but it needs some economic stimulus, and we're hoping that by having this facility and the number of people that'll be coming each and every night to it, that it will attract some economic and commercial activity as we go along. So I think that is what I would say to you. We very much appreciate your support in the resolution that Councilmember Broseth is authoring. It has two basic asks. One is to, the council's support of the stadium project in principle, and then the council's support for our capital outlay request in Baton Rouge, which the council's, you know, communication of that and expression of support would be very helpful. I'd like to invite, if there are any other board members that would like to add to anything that I would said, and then we will close it with a video before, Jared, I turn it back over to you. Anybody else from the Board of Directors?
So, hi, hi, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the few minutes that you've given us to share this project. As you know, when I was in the Senate, although I represented the lower Ninth Ward, that whole area is an area that needs, so desperately needs to love, right, and to have some economic stimulus. Although, you know, we know that this will be a facility that is very well needed for the upper Ninth and the lower Ninth Ward, but also for all of the kids in our city, it will provide some economic stimulus. And so we're very excited about it, and hopefully after you learn more and then even see the little short video that you'll become as excited and will, you know, help us in any way that you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Plessis.
Thank you. Are there any other board members?
I would, Arnie, if it's on my, Wilbur Thomas, and this has been overdue. I live in this community, I grew up in this community all my life. It is something that would help the whole city, not just this community, but it is way overdue, and we hope that you all support us on this, because this is something this community really needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Hi, thank you for having us today. Just really excited, would just like to, again, echo everything that my fellow board members have said, and of course, the Rams are extremely excited about it. The kids ask me anytime I'm in the building, you know, Ms. Martin, what's happening with the stadium? Where are we, where is it? Will it happen before we leave Carver? And so just want to, again, echo our fellow board members in requesting your support.
And I guess I would be remiss not to at least thank each of you all for your time and consideration. I'm involved not because I live in that section of the city, but because I recognize the needs that are there to help with the economic development that will help the entire Ninth Ward and in that way help the entire city. I've been involved in the NORAD reformation project, process in the past, and this is a very strong part of trying to keep recreation moving in the right direction. So thank you for each of you all's consideration.
Thank you, thank you all. Gillian, if you could key up the video and then Councilmember, it's all yours.
Could, I need to share audio, sorry.
Hey, Gillian, the share audio option is an option on your side in advanced settings.
Yes.
So I always go back to myself, and I lay it on the line for these gentlemen and tell them every day that, hey, don't never take no shortcuts or no excuses. And if playing ball, playing football for me would carry me over, even when times get difficult, whether it's classes, whether it's in the work world, I just, it goes all the way back to the things and the lessons that my coaches taught me.
And the lower Ninth Ward has always had such rich history. Family and community was always ever present, right? And it was so unfortunate many times that, that all of the resources that should have been available to the Ninth Ward community and to the residents of the community weren't readily available. This project will right a lot of wrongs. It will bring such vibrancy and it will bring excitement to a community that deserves it.
And when we talk about community developments, when we talk about enhancing New Orleans, when we talk about the pains associated with Katrina, you have to realize that giving back to the community is how we rebuild a community, in particular when we're talking about children. And as we know, recreation is a key part to the success of any community.
It will provide a first-class venue to a community that really needs it, not only in terms of sports and opportunities for kids and economics, but just it's a feel-good project that will really uplift the spirits of those that live in the Ninth Ward.
And I do think that such an investment can also demonstrate an overdue, needed vote of confidence in one of America's, in one of New Orleans' most treasured neighborhoods, the Ninth Ward. The Ninth Ward is a great neighborhood that's produced so many great people, great artists, great musicians, great leaders.
It brings together the power of athletics. It brings it together to bring a community together, and we've seen successes like that in many different areas across the country, and I think this could be the latest example of how athletics and that camaraderie of sports can bring a community together that can revitalize a whole area. So I'm excited about this project. I can't wait to see the finished product so I can go and root on some local high school kids. So I think it's important for our community, I'm looking forward to it, and hopefully I can be of some help.
For many personal reasons, I'm deeply, deeply committed to a revival and a renaissance of the Ninth Ward, and a stadium could play such a role. There's nothing like a quality place for young athletes, boys and girls, to be able to play and perform in a sporting event. Sporting events breed healthy competition, a respect in the development of one's minds, minds and bodies, a chance to emphasize the need for young people to be scholars and athletes, not just athletes, but scholars and athletes. So I'm proud to support the Ninth Ward Stadium and endorse it with everything I had, and I am looking forward with great enthusiasm to being there for both a groundbreaking and a ribbon-cutting when it does happen. So long live the mighty Ninth Ward, long live the great city of New Orleans.
I want to see everybody to win, not just our players, but every player that come through here. Because we, when we leave, we gonna come back, we coming back and see that.
We coming back to see what they doing, just like the players before us coming back to see what we doing.
Right.
You got that, man?
Yes, sir.
Don't sing?
Don't mean.
Don't sing?
Don't mean.
Who we love?
I fuck whatever.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity. We are very appreciative and grateful. We look forward to bringing you good news as we go into the coming months and into next year, and it will be awfully nice with good fortune here that in the fall of 2023, we will all be sitting in the new Ninth Ward Stadium and watching our first sporting event in the neighborhood. So thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Broseth. Jared, thank you so much and the rest of the council for the opportunity today.
Yeah, thank you. Before, I'm sorry, before, I just wanted to, one thing I don't think that we clarified was that although this board is a fundraising board, once the money has been raised, we will not, we will not construct a stadium. It is all going to the New Orleans Public School System, and they will be the fiduciary to do an open bid and, you know, go through the process of building the stadium. So we will not touch the money at all once it's raised. It will all be transferred over to the school board, and they will have the pleasure of building the stadium. And one final thing, although Mr. Thomas, Wilbur Thomas, did speak, he is one of our newest board members who is from the community of the community, and he will make sure that we stay on task and on target. So I just wanted to make sure we highlight that as well.
Thank you, Senator, and we, we have that, you know, they say where we come from in the legislature, that is definitely in the details. It's in a resolution, and Arnie, thank you. Everybody, Dottie, thank you for your work. Thank you to my staff as well, putting this together. It is my hope that it won't take a year to raise all these funds to get this project off the ground. This is a project, I think, the entire city, from public, private, nonprofit, that everyone can embrace, because it's all about, all about our children. I'm gonna read the resolution before I turn it over to my colleagues for comment. Resolution 21137, whereas youth participation in sports has a demonstrated positive impact on their development, statistics show that high school athletes are more likely to attend and graduate college than non-athletes. Additionally, New Orleans has a proud history of producing national athletic stars, and whereas there is a demonstrated need for additional sporting venues in the city of New Orleans for middle and high school sports, currently only two stadiums with capacity in excess of 2,500 seats are available for use on the East Bank of New Orleans, Pan American Stadium and Tad Gormley Stadium, both located in City Park. And whereas there is ample space and community commitment to constructing a state-of-the-art 4,000, 5,000-seat stadium in the Ninth Ward next to George Washington Carver High School on land owned by the New Orleans Public Schools, and whereas the Ninth Ward Stadium Complex will serve not just Carver High School, but the entire city of New Orleans Public School System with special emphasis on the more eastern parts of the city. And whereas the Ninth Ward Stadium will accommodate a range of sporting events from football and soccer to track and field with an artificial turf football field and an eight-laying track for attendees, there will be a grandstand seating plus a press box and scoreboard, restrooms, concessions, and ticketing, parking, and site amenities. And whereas one of the total project funds, once the total project funds are raised, the facility will be under the governance of the New Orleans Public Schools with input from the community and also those involved in providing the funding. New Orleans Public Schools will be executing a cooperative endeavor agreement with the local nonprofit, Ninth Ward Stadium, Inc., to allow the nonprofit to fundraise for the project. And whereas Ninth Ward Stadium, Inc. will be a 501(c)(3) and has its original incorporators, eight local community leaders who believe passionately in a new project, Arnie Filco, Andrew Plessis, Stacy Martin, Roy Glapion, Deuce McAllister, Bobby Guerin, Mark Ripple, and Wilbur Thomas Sr. And whereas the $5 million stadium project necessitates a 1.45 million, rather, investment from state capital outlay funding, which is currently part of the capital outlay request for the 2022 state fiscal year, and whereas Ninth Ward Stadium Incorporated is committed to fundraising the remaining 3.55 million in funding from private donations, which will be deposited in a local banking institution, all donations received and funds dispersed will be tracked in an open and transparent process. And whereas that Ninth Ward Stadium project is an opportunity to invest in our children and our communities still struggling to recover from Hurricane Katrina, it will serve as an economic catalyst for the entire Ninth Ward in the city of New Orleans. Now therefore, being resolved by the Council of the City of New Orleans, that the Council expresses its full support for the construction of a new stadium and sports complex in the Ninth Ward adjacent to George Washington Carver High School, and being further resolved that the Louisiana Legislature is urged to allocate state capital outlay funding for the Ninth Ward Stadium Complex. And foregoing resolution was read in full, and we will adopt accordingly shortly. So thank you all, and I will open it up to my council colleagues. Council President?
Thank you, Councilmember Broseth, for bringing this resolution, and thank you to the board. Many of you I've known for quite some time, you're my friends. Great to see you, Senator Plessis, it's been, it's been a long time. Dottie, great to see you, even saw Ashley as well. So, you know, I think the point's already been clear, but this is more than just a stadium. This is really something that could be not only a fantastic place, of course, for our kids and recreation, but this really could be a significant anchor in the Ninth Ward, economic development catalyst, as has been mentioned. You know, I think about when there are big Friday night football games at other high schools and how that impacts, you know, little local restaurants and how that drives business. And so I just think that building a sports complex like this in the Ninth Ward greatly needed, and I think something that will lead to much success in this particular area. So you all have worked on this so hard, and it's so great to see that we're finally getting to those steps where now we see that it's going to actually come to fruition, because the conversation around the stadium, look, it's been, it's been happening since, you know, I think I was still in TV news at the time when the conversations first started, so a long time ago. So to now finally be at the point where it's like, oh, my gosh, I think we're seeing the finish line and that it's actually gonna happen is really amazing. So thank you once again for your dedication and hard work, because... Today, we're introducing the Children's Bill of Rights right after this, and you guys are talking about space where children have the right to play. And many of our neighborhood, our children don't have that right. So thank you so much for really having that virtual connection with us at Council and the work that we do for the city of New Orleans. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen, and this is this is a win for the entire city. Madam Clerk, please add Councilmember Nguyen and Jeruso's name.
Mine too, please.
And Councilmember Moreno's.
Mine too.
And Councilmember Palmer's.
And Councilmember Glapion.
And Councilmember Glapion's.
Let me add in all.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thanks so much, Councilmember. I just want to thank you all so much. Y'all have, you know, we've been, I've seen your faces working on this after Katrina and Bobby. Arnie, thank you for continuing the fight, and Senator DePlessis, y'all just really are tremendous. And Stacy, it was great seeing you out there at the food pantry a couple weeks ago over there at Rosenwald, and I know where your passion lies. And, you know, I just want to bring up that it was so exciting this year to get the brand-new Edna Carr building up and going. And one of the fabulous things behind the Edna Carr is this beautiful turf field, and it creates also such a a place of pride and for the students there, and they're so excited about it. And I just think, again, we need to have more of these types of facilities geographically spread out throughout the entire city that are really reflective. I think spaces are reflective of our children and where our value system is. And to have something that is that this professional, especially with the track, and can also be used for soccer and for the girls, it's really, really important. And so just, I applaud all of you for for having the wherewithal to continue this process, and I'm thrilled.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember, thanks.
I wanted to ask, I'm sorry, this whole Zoom thing, man, it makes you do too many things at the same time. So with that, would you please also add me? And I think it would be all seven of us.
Thank you. All seven.
Councilmember Berset.
Yes, Councilmember Jeruso.
Thank you. I want to echo what everybody has said, but I want to circle back to what Arnie started with, which is, we talk about COVID and and where we are now a year later, but really the message is one of resiliency. And I think Helena sort of stole my sports analogy because I was going to go with, it's not how you start, it's how you finish, right? And this has been such a long endeavor, and really what you're seeing from the board in particular who are doing this is this has been a labor of love that has taken longer to where we wanted to get to. But it shows to me a couple of different things, not only a commitment to a transformative project and a part of the city that needs it, but also that we're giving people hope and that there's follow-through as well. And I think that's a significant message as well, is not only bringing something that's tangible, that people can touch and we can enjoy, and that there's going to be moments created here, we're creating money, but also that we care and that we're going to follow up on the commitments and the promises that we're trying to make as well. So I applaud you all for all of that. So good to see so many friends on the call, too, and really appreciate all of the hard work. Arnie said you're not getting compensated for this, so bears mentioning again that everybody's doing this because of their own commitments to the project. And I think there's almost nothing more precious you can give than your time and your care. So thank you all for all of your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Jeruso.
Jared, if I may, please. I'm sorry, I turned in before just to get that, but I had to finish up with with my staff quickly. But this whole concept dovetails into something that you all had heard me say repeatedly, that if you don't give kids something constructive to do, there's a possibility that they will find something destructive to do. Giving our kids resources to keep them in safe, structured activities not only benefits them, but it benefits this entire community. So I'm glad that this is moving. I'm glad that it is happening, and this is something that we should all be very proud of in the sense that we've got to take ownership and accept the fact that we do have to have our kids directed in positive manners. Giving them a place where they can be involved in a structured activity will keep them from being someplace else that we don't want them to be. So I'm glad that this is happening and and glad to be a co-author. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I do, I just want to, I was talking about it this morning, and I just want to reiterate, you know, with just the Youth Master Plan that the city put out just came out, and it's really based in the demographics of our city and our children. And I and I'm just bringing this up publicly because it's a really great starting point on where the resources are and where they're not. And it's very obvious the majority of the kids live in the east and the Algeiers, yet we do not have the same resources that other parts of the city do. And when I'm talking about resources, I'm also talking about programming, right? So we can build these wonderful facilities, but we also have to talk about the programming that exists within these and within the different places. And if we can also use this as an ability to talk about, and even to our nonprofit partners, that they that it would be great for them to reach out to other geographic areas of the city to provide the programming that our kids need, right? We can build these beautiful buildings all over, but we also need partners that can help us with the programming for all of our kids, so it's almost like 24/7. So I just wanted to add that because I'm super excited about the Youth Master Plan that has just come out.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. And to that point, it's definitely a partnership, full circle, and we, you know, it's about equity and program and city services. And we just broke ground on a multi-service center that we are replacing back in the Florida area that existed pre-Katrina. So also proud about that and proud to say Mr. Wilbur, who is on the call as well, is doing his part in replacing his community center that'll be going to construction. So anybody else have anything to add while we close up? Councilmember Glapion?
Just want to say real quickly, it's just no wonder with this team assembled that you guys are able to get it to this point and bring it on home. The folks that are represented on this board are just stellar with such a history of service to this city, and so it's just no wonder. Just thank you guys for your service in bringing it to this point. We certainly appreciate you all.
And thank you, Councilmember Glapion. Hearing no other comments, I would move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nguyen. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Councilmember Moreno?
Yay.
Councilmember Glapion?
Yay.
Councilmember Jeruso?
Yay.
Councilmember Banks?
Yay.
Councilmember Palmer?
Yay.
Councilmember Berset?
Yay.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yay.
Vote is 7-0. The resolution passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 7-0.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.